Carrying of the planning board. And we welcome you. And we'll have a roll call. And I'll call the roll call because our secretary is out. But we do have a quorum. John Zuccarelli?
Fire exits. There are two fire exits.
It's coming.
Oh, okay. I want to make sure they leave.
John? Present?
Yes.
Gloriaen Burke?
Present.
Robin Long?
Present.
John Blaney is absent. And Dennis Finnerty is here.
Yay.
Bravo. We have a full --
Two minutes early.
We have a quorum.
Not according to this clock.
So please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible)
That clock is wrong. He's right.
It's got a minute.
Yeah, Apple time.
Well, he's actually got 14 seconds.
So welcome to the public hearing, public portion. We -- just some safety features. There are two exits from this room. In case of emergency, leave through those doors. Go down the stairs, out the front door. Either use the ramp or the stairs themselves. We are trying to initiate a card sign-in system. But I don't think it got initiated tonight. So if you would, and you come, just sign your name and your affiliation when you speak. Give your associate -- your name and your association. And so I think that's it. And we're going to go to the first application, which is Wireless Towers, the UH Cemetery. Dennis, you want to read? Kathleen, do we have jurisdiction?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Please take notes in accordance with the town code of the town of Southampton. A pre-submission conference will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, September 12, 2019, 6:00 p.m. prevailing time at the Southampton Town Hall, 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, to consider the pre-submission application entitled Wireless Towers, West Hampton. The application is to construct a 125-foot wireless communication facility, concealment pole, and accessory structures on a 132, 101 square foot vacant parcel located in the motel zoning district, a New York State archeological sensitive area, and the WQI medium priority area situated at 52 Montauk Highway Hamlet, West Hampton, tax map 903-562-1.8. By order of the planning board, Philip Keith, Secretary.
And who is -- are you representing the application?
Bailey Larkin with Bennett and Reed, offices at 212 Windmillian in Southampton, on behalf of Wireless Towers, LLC. We are proposing construction of a 125-foot tall concealment pole on a property that's located in the Motel and R40 district. The tower is proposed to be located kind of in the corner of the property, farthest possible from Montauk Highway and from Seabreeze. The tower itself would require a waiver from the town's requirement that the pole be located at 100 percent of the height of the tower from property lines. However, the location was chosen so that we maximize our setbacks from public vantage. And the lot that kind of surrounds it is actually a property that's vacant, property owned by the town of Southampton and Suffolk County. So it's not a property that will be developed in the future. We obviously intend to supplement our record with additional information about that need and visuals. But this, for the initial public hearing, we have filed the site plan prepared by WFC Neil McDonald, the principal with William F. Collins Architects, is here if you have any questions about the location or the tower itself. And also, Lee Wortman with VHB will be preparing a study for the board, obviously, when we file the complete site plan special exception application. The tower itself is currently proposed to have antennas for Verizon Wireless in the top 10 feet of the pole.
Internally?
Internally, correct. And T-Mobile within the next two sections. It's been designed as a concealment pole with everything concealed within the tower itself, and will be galvanized metal as per the town's requirements.
How shy is it from the fall zone? How many feet?
We're proposing to push it all the way almost to the property line. So it would be 22 feet off the eastern property line, about 19 feet off the northern property line. So it is shy of the 125-foot requirement.
Fall zones significantly.
Correct.
It looks -- from the aerial, it looks like the property that you're describing is town and county owned as wooded.
Correct.
Well, how is that used, if at all?
Actually, the development rights were purchased by the town and county. So it's actually just vacant.
Are there any trails in there that might be impacted by the pole falling?
Not that I'm aware of. And when we do file the full application, we will file structural information on the tower to assure the board that there won't be any sort of safety concerns with the location.
Any other questions before we open it up to the public? No? Thanks. Would someone like to speak to this application? Anyone? Yes, please.
Want my name here and then say it as well, correct?
Please.
Tony Joe Burke. I live at 1 Percy Street, West Hampton. I'm here representing myself. Looking at this, what is -- it states here that this location is within a New York State archeologically sensitive area. What is the definition of an archeologically sensitive area?
An archeologically sensitive area is an area determined by New York State that in fact could contain artifacts, archeological artifacts. And they determine these sites, not very specifically, but by circles. So you can go to the town and you can see archeologically sensitive areas that are large circles throughout the town. So that's what that means.
Okay. And then I guess my concern is the impact of this 125-foot tower on the aesthetics of the community in the area. As the young lady stated, yes, it's in a wooded area. There's a lot of wildlife in that area, a lot of deer, a lot of turkeys, which is amazing the amount of turkeys that are back in the area. But it's all wooded, it's private, it's beautiful. My concerns are the aesthetics of this 125-foot cell phone tower. Safety. No one ever seems to talk about the real deal behind the impact of a cell tower. But you're not supposed to be too close to it. I don't know what that exact footage is. I'm not an engineer, I'm not a scientist, I'm a John Q. Public. But I am fully aware of what they admit, but no one seems to talk about the dangers to society. I understand the town is looking at doing -- would like to have fewer, smaller cell towers in the town than large, obtrusive towers. I know the town's interested in minimizing any visual impact that a cell tower may propose to our town and our community. And of course, it should fit harmoniously within the community. It's a motel zone, which I don't think there's -- I can't say if there'll ever be a motel built in that area, as well as R40, Resident 40. And a 125-foot cell tower would negatively impact the properties in that surrounding area for resale value, for current value, for whatever the case may be. We are Southampton Town. We are on the East End, we are on the Hamptons. We are trying to save as much property as possible with community preservation funds, buying up lots of land to keep our area beautiful and aesthetically pleasing as it is. I believe this would be a real bad move to have this cell tower. Do you happen to know what the financial gain would be to the party to allow this to be there?
No, we don't. That's not -- we're not privy to that information. But they have co-locating companies on the tower.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it's not -- is it public information for the public? I guess I'm addressing this to you. Is it public information?
I have to address the board.
Okay, addressed to you, okay. So there's -- is there any way I could find out what that fee is in exchange for the 125-foot tower? What money's being given? Is there any way you can get that information?
I don't know. I don't know, but we can ask. We can ask the applicant.
That'd be terrific.
As far as visually -- the visual aesthetic, they're required to do a visual assessment. And so they will put up usually a crane, typically a crane, that will go 125 feet. And it's looked at from various vantage points throughout the community. So you'll be able to see.
Excellent. And just for my own information, and a couple of other things, but what is -- the public hearing is right now. What is the process going forward? Just to be -- so I can stay on top of what this process is.
Well, they'll file an application and with all of the details. And you can come and listen to those. And there'll be a 10-day, probably a 10-day written comment period after we close this, in which case you can file your questions and concerns as anyone else can.
Okay.
So that's pretty much the process.
And everything will be updated on the town website?
Should be, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the agendas are on there.
Terrific.
You should be aware that the Federal Communications Act of 1996 severely restricted the ability of municipalities, and this is not just towns, counties and state, to regulate cell towers. I mean, we could tell this guy, this operator, put it on this corner or that corner, but we can't say, hey, this is West Hampton, like West Hampton, we're not -- we're going to deny your application because of aesthetics. We deal with this a lot. And there's no way you can hide a 125-foot tower. You're going to see it.
Exactly. Exactly. And it just seems there are other parts, and I'm not going to say what other areas I recommend it could be in. And this is where the technology's going, but just...
Well, they're required to give to us the range of what they need. In other words, they have to prove that the cell tower in that location is necessary for service. There might be another cell tower two miles away or three miles away. So they have to plop that and show that this is needed. A cell tower went up in Bridgehampton, right by the train -- if you're interested, right by the train station.
Okay.
And it's 100 and -- I think it's 120 feet or 100 feet. It's a concealed monopole. It has co-located companies in it. And just take a look.
I definitely will. Thank you. Do I have anything else for you? No, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm a trustee of the cemetery board. And when the wireless company came to us and asked if we would allow them to put the tower up on our property, we looked at it and we said yes. And we asked them to have it put in the far corner of the property, which they did, so it would be -- wouldn't impact our future use of the cemetery. This piece of property, we purchased when the town and the county purchased the additional 28 acres around it. There was a 31-acre piece of property. Town and the county purchased the other 28 and allowed us to purchase this three acre for future use. Because when our cemetery that we have now fills, which will be filled up in the next few years, we're going to have to develop this. And the funds income that we get from the cell tower, which my understanding is we are going to be getting 50 percent of their income per month, when I'm not sure what that is. And that would help us to develop the cemetery. If we didn't have -- by the way, if we didn't have a cemetery, if ours was filled and we didn't have a place to bury people, our cemetery would go bankrupt and the town would have to take over it and handle the cemetery like they do with other private cemeteries.
Good. Thank you. Thanks for the information.
You're welcome.
Anyone else would like to speak to this application? If not, we'll close. Oh, it's pre-submission, so it's 30 days, right? Close in the 30 days. Oh, sorry.
My name is Bart Burke. I am the owner of number 1 Percy Street. It's interesting to be here in front of you today. I was denied a zoning application on that exact property, the first property I ever bought. I am on the corner of Seabreeze and Montauk Highway. The other properties are the Buoy, the West Hampton Motel, and a vacant property that is zoned highway business. I bought the property at 20 years old, not able to drink, figuring that maybe I can change the zone to highway business. I was denied. Proceeded to go back to the drawing board and went for a specific use variance. I was denied. I was denied three to two, which is very unusual. I'm kind of upset that John isn't here because he was one of the ones that was on my side. I'm very disheartened with the town of Southampton. My exit strategy is in place. I owned Viking Kite in West Hampton Beach for 43 years. I recently owned a property in West Hampton Beach that was across the street that I have also sold. I'm in process of selling the shop. I'm going to sell this one because I'm done. You are going against your code, your plan for aesthetics of the cell phone tower, whatever your plan is. I understand it's not a law, it's a plan, and it's something that you have to follow or maybe follow, or again, maybe. I thank you so much for your time. I thank you so much for your commitment. I am against it thoroughly. My wife asked before, what was the timeframe? I didn't get a thorough answer on that one, so I'm going to go back to it. Exactly the timeline of what happens next, where it goes, and how I can be thoroughly involved to oppose this. If it does get approved, I am going to -- I am sorry, I am -- no, I'm not sorry at all. I am going to be forced to litigate Southampton Town from past precedence of my own problems that the town has caused me. I currently live in that property. I'm trying to stay here, guys. It's getting harder and harder and harder.
Here you are. Kathleen, do you want to talk about the process? Or Anthony, would you like to respond to the process? Just tell the group. Yeah.
Anthony Trezor for the town of Southampton. We're in a pre-submission conference right now, which is a first step in the application process. After we get through this hearing tonight, staff will prepare a report that identifies issues and concerns, will identify the comments that we've received from the public. And then the applicant will take that information and submit at some point at their discretion a formal site plan application in which there would be another opportunity or other opportunities to be heard if the board has other public hearings on this. There'll be work sessions or afternoon meetings that you won't be able to speak at, but that you could come and hear the discussions that the board's having. But at some point, when we get a formal application, it's deemed complete, there will be a public hearing on that formal application. So there'll be another opportunity to be heard in the process.
Okay. And there's a 30-day written comment period?
Yes, just to correct, there is a 30-day written comment period after this. Not 10, yep.
Okay, so I have a motion. Any additional speakers? No? Okay. Intend a motion for --
Move to close, 30 days?
30-day comment period. Motion by Dennis.
Second.
Second by Robin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions. Six in favor, one absent. Number two is T-Mobile, Jagger Path, Verizon.
We have noticed, Madam Chair.
You have noticed. Yeah. Please take notice that in accordance with the town code of the town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, September 12, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. prevailing time at the Southampton Town Hall at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, to consider the site plan application entitled T-Mobile Northeast, Jagger Path. The site plan special exception application is for the 10-foot extension on an existing 90-foot tall monopole, proposed total 100 feet with three panel antennas and six duplexers to be concealed in the extension along with the equipment cabinets on the ground on a site improved with an existing salvage yard on a 4.2-acre site located in the LI40 zoning district at 196A Jagger Path, Hamlet of Spion, Suffolk County, tax map number 903-53135, by order of the planning board of the town of Southampton. Philip Keith, Secretary.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Denise Vista with Amato Law Group. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, New York SNSA Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless. We've been before you for the pre-application conference. As was stated, we're proposing a 10-foot extension on the existing 90-foot monopole and a small equipment compound that'll be adjacent to the T-Mobile equipment compound. We do require fall zone relief on the western portion, just shy of the 100 feet required. We're at 80.3. But I will note that's an existing condition. When the pole was built, it was approved for 80 feet, but was actually constructed to 90 feet. So as it stands today, it does not comply with the fall zone. My understanding is that when the 10 feet was administratively approved, they didn't seek the fall zone relief. So essentially, we're here for an existing condition, an extension of the non-conforming condition. And we're also seeking a waiver of the landscaping requirements because frankly, it doesn't make sense to plant landscaping at the auto salvage yard. Last week, we had submitted a few expert reports, which I can just note for the record. An engineering report prepared by Dan Fallasco. Planning report prepared by VHB Engineering Surveying Landscape Architecture and Geology. Real estate report prepared by Lynch Appraisal. And lastly, we had updated the RF report that was prepared by C-Squad Systems, which demonstrates the need for this facility, as well as the FAA determination, which indicates that no lighting or marking is required. I do have those experts with me this evening if you have questions.
Do you have co-locators in here?
There is an existing T-Mobile facility.
Is this part of the salvage yard? This is inside the salvage yard?
It is. It's on the western portion of it, yes.
Any other questions? By us? And what's in that, in those 20 feet where you say you don't need the fall zone?
Um, next, on the western portion is it's an industrial zoned LI40 and the Long Island Railroad tracks. So essentially, no homes can be built there, and there isn't any structures. The nearest structure is 250 feet to the west.
Except for the tracks of the railroad.
It's actually not adjacent to it. It's just a little further down.
Not at --
Yes.
Much bigger is the compounds area?
It's 123 square feet.
And what is it now?
Well, there is an existing T-Mobile. It's around -- theirs is about 300.
So this would be an extension or another one? I'm sorry.
So essentially, the -- it would be just to the west of it.
Oh, okay. So it'll be an additional?
Yes. We're not expanding it, per se. We're building our own, adjacent to the monopole.
I have no other questions. Okay. Is someone in the -- anyone in the audience would like to speak to this application? More from the board? So 10-day, we'll get a close with a 10-day written comment period?
Motion.
Motion by Dennis. Second by Gloriaen. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, extensions. Six in favor, one absent. No, five -- how many are there? Five of us?
Yeah.
Two absent. Two absent. Five in favor, two absent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're going to keep that, Dennis? I'm going to keep it. Hand it in.
Oh, okay. I thought we were going to --
I just need posting on that. I have to be able to post it.
Okay. Anthony, this is yours.
They have to give me this.
Dennis, this is yours.
Thank you.
You want this one?
I'm not on?
Number three, the Bridgehampton Childcare Administrative Building.
We have noticed, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Notice of a public hearing. Please take notice that in accordance with the town code of the town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, September 12, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. prevailing time at Southampton Town, 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, to consider the site plan application entitled Bridgehampton Childcare and Rec. Center. The site plan application is to demolish an existing two-story administration building and construct a new administrative building with reconfigured access and parking, no increase in capacity, located on a 5.9-acre parcel, improve with an existing childcare facility situated in the Aquifer Protection Overlay District located at 551 Bridgehampton Sag Harbor Turnpike East Side, approximately 838 feet south of Woodruff Lane, Hamlet of Bridgehampton. Suffolk County Tax Map number is 90-54-1-2. By order of the planning board of the town of Southampton, Philip Keith, Secretary.
Mr. O'Shea?
Good evening, members of the board. James O'Shea from Lower Farmville, Shea Marson's Again Brewing, for the applicant. I have passed out a handout for the members of the board. It includes both a map and a brief history of the property, including some of the prior permits that were obtained on this property. I think the board is pretty familiar with this property. It houses the Bridgehampton Childcare and Recreational Center. It has existed on this property for over 50 years. I think all the board members would agree, it's a wonderful, wonderful organization and definitely a positive addition to the community. The town has reviewed plans for additions and modifications on this premise since the 70s. And again, that is included in the history that we have submitted to the board. The property contains four buildings with classrooms, administrative offices, and recreational space. There are also sports courts, a tennis court, and a ball field. The facility is served by a circular driveway and a parking lot with two curb cuts, which each go onto the Sag Harbor Turnpike. More than three-quarters of the property has been cleared, with the remaining woodland portions located on the northerly and easterly boundaries of the property. As explained in the application, the applicant seeks site plan approval to replace the existing, what I call, administrative building, which is 2,688 square feet. It's building number A on the plan, and it's located on the southwestly portion of the property with a new 7,828-square-foot building. The building currently houses classrooms and the administrative offices. To accommodate the new building, the northerly curb cut will be removed, and the southerly curb cut will be reconfigured. The existing paved parking area will be reconfigured. It will be reduced in size and repaved with new drainage structures where none currently exist. The site plan, landscape, and lighting plans, and architectural floor plans and elevations have been submitted to the board. A negative declaration under secret was adopted by the planning board on October the 8th, 2019. In addition, I would note that two members of the board are present tonight. Ms. Bonnie Cannon and Mr. Dan Ratner are here. And if we could also see, have Mr. Sammy speak to the board regarding the details of the site plan, the building layout, and the design.
Good evening, board members. CMX Sammy, architect representing our client, Bridgehampton Childcare and Recreational Center. I have been involved in the design of this building, this new expansion of this building, since about a year and a half, two years ago. Basically, our first concept was restoration of the original building, which is a modestly-sized farm building dating back to the 1930s, 40s. But upon further investigation, we found out that the condition of that is such that we basically have to replace the whole thing. But the addition that was proposed to this existing building was basically in coordination and in harmony with that. Basically, rather than going for a full two-story height building, we went for a one-and-a-half story with dormers at top, so it would be more in line with the existing structures and also the neighborhood, as far as -- As far as material, again, these are all the vernacular of the area, shingles, both roof and walls, with painted trim, white trim. We've introduced elements such as the porch, actually, the architecture of the southern portion, which is where the original building used to be, is an exact replica and a copy of that original building. So we're replacing that exactly as is with an extension towards its north. We're reducing the driveway that went to the highway from two to one, albeit expanded to accommodate traffic both directions, and also reconfiguring the parking to accommodate all the needs. It's basically an addition to the campus of these buildings that exist over there and enhancing the architecture and the vista on the roadway. Any questions I could answer?
You're proposing an IA subject system?
Yes, we are.
And your parking calculations are accurate?
We're accurate and according to-
It's a much-needed addition. Looks beautiful.
Thank you.
Any plans to upgrade the other existing sanitary systems?
Not at the moment, no. This is primarily to address the new building.
Okay.
The buildings, the other buildings were added on or rebuilt in recent history. So they were upgraded, at least two of those buildings have upgraded, septic systems. The northerly structure, which is the smallest building, which is a small house, that has not been upgraded at this moment.
Anyone like to speak to this application? Dan?
I'm Dan Rettiner from Dan's Papers, and I've been on the board of this organization for 10 years. The building we have is very old and kind of falling apart and is not suitable, it's a house not really suitable for having students there as well as this new building would have if we go, if we are able to build it, which I hope we are. I just wanted to say that this will allow us to provide more services for these disadvantaged kids because there'll be more classrooms. And that's basically it, probably more kids will be coming to it. And it's just a wonderful project, and I hope you, we've tried to do it properly, and hope we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Any further comments? If not, we'll close with a 10-day written comment period. Motion by Dennis. Second by Robin, all in favor.
Your free?
Give me, John.
I'm gonna wear a pant leg and give them my voice out in tapes.
Do we have to notice?
He's giving the notice now.
Can I go ahead?
Fine.
Yeah.
You should be today.
If I don't have to be like a-
I'll read for you.
You're gonna read me after, after. To the last one.
I can probably get it.
I can't open it.
Sure. So we're going to move to number five of RJS Real Properties LLC.
He's coming back.
He's coming back.
Do we have a notice, Kathleen?
Oh, sorry. I need affidavit of posting. Is there an applicant here?
RJS?
RJS, I need, I have the mailing, I just need the affidavit.
Yes. I apologize.
Are you representing RJS?
Oh, yes, I'm, well, Wayne is. Oh, we are, yes.
You are Wayne tonight.
I was gonna say, I think, I was gonna make fun of Wayne tonight, but I know. We're on TV.
We do that every day.
And we will tell on you, too. You know, I will call in the morning.
That's what I would like.
Yes.
Okay. Please take notice that in accordance with the town code of the town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, September 12th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. prevailing time at the Southampton Town Hall, 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, to consider the site plan application entitled RJS Real Properties, Inc. Site plan special exception application is to restore a former bank building with a canopy and new drive-through and for the construction of a new 7,300-square-foot building for retail, auto parts, and supplies. On a property currently improved with one vacant, with a vacant one-story building previously used as a bank located in the highway business zoning district, 93 East Montauk Highway, tax map 902-631-32.4. By order of the Planning Board of the town of Southampton, Philip Keith, Secretary.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is James O'Shea. I'm from the Law Firm O'Shea, Marson, Sincere and Bruin. We represent the applicant, RJS Real Properties, LLC. I believe the board knows where this property is located. It's on the north side of East Montauk Highway, County Road 80, approximately 236 feet west of Bittersweet South Extension in Hampton Bay. It's right next to the Carvel and the, it's shown as lot number one on the subdivision map of Capital One filed in the Suffolk County Clerk's Office on October 29th, 2015, as map number 12013. The Suffolk County Tax Map number is 90263132.004. The lot area is 96,178 square feet, or 2.2 acres. It is zoned highway business. The property has remained zoned highway business since 1972. The premises was first improved with a family restaurant in 1978. Pursuant to a COO dated June 23rd, 1978. In 1984, the restaurant business was converted to a bank with a drive-through window, and we've provided you with the appropriate site plan and CO number C8384 dated May 18th, 1984. And I believe to us, we would know it as, I think it was a North Fork Bank building. In 1991, an automatic teller machine was added to the premises. North Fork Bank, now Capital One, occupied the premises until the property was subdivided, and a new drive-in bank facility was approved and constructed on the property that was spun off, on the adjacent property to the east. The existing bank building, drive-through lanes, and parking area are located on the westerly portion of the property and are served by two curb cuts onto Montauk Highway. The applicant requests, as explained in the application and the tax petition, site plan and special exception permission to reestablish a drive-through for the existing bank building. In other words, the building that has or had a drive-through that still exists, we're seeking permission to continue that use. And to construct a one-story 7,379-square-foot building with 332 square feet covered entry to be used for permitted auto supply store, auto zone. The proposed site plan will result in the reconfiguration and reduction of the two curb cuts into one curb cut. The site plan application petition submitted to the board demonstrates compliance with the special exception general conditions and special safeguards and conditions for the reestablishment of the drive-through window for the existing bank building. A negative declaration under seeker was adopted by the Planning Board on July 25th, 2019. On August 22nd, 2019, the Planning Board authorized a building permit for the commencement of interior and exterior renovations to the existing building. Mr. Jeffrey Butler is here to explain the details of the site plan, the building layout, and the design.
Good evening, members of the board. Jeffrey Butler, professional engineer of offices at 206 Lincoln Street, Riverhead, New York. As Mr. O'Shea had alluded, the project involves the redevelopment of a site which had a bank and a drive-through. The plan before you proposes to reestablish the drive-through for the new bank tenant and construct a separate 7,379-square-foot building for auto retail, auto parts retail. In the redevelopment of the site, both the existing curb cuts are to be removed, and one new curb cut is proposed for use by both buildings for the common parking area, which is redesigned. Additional parking is proposed, which is designed to account for both uses. New drainage is proposed, new site lighting is proposed, new landscaping is proposed with a new dumpster location. On the subdivision map that was done in 2015, this being lot one, there were two buffers established on the rear of the property, which buffer the residential neighborhoods. Those are being complied with in this design. There's a 50-foot and 100-foot. Both of those we have, we have honored. We have reviewed the staff's comments dated June 25th, 2019, and have no issues addressing those comments. We have also received comments from both Suffolk County Department of Health Services and Suffolk County DPW, and will address those comments as well without any difficulty. And I would entertain any questions you may have on the site itself.
The only question that I have, I understand it's a auto supply store going in there, but looking forward to maybe sometime it will change tenancy and such. Would it be advantageous to have some type of way of walking safely between the two buildings?
We had, we had looked at that, and that was actually one of the staff's comments. And it, if I can figure out a way to do it without interrupting one of the parking spaces, I would certainly like to see that happen.
I'm not an engineer, and I'm not a designer. I just think of things in the future. I'm saying, I think that would be advantageous because you know that once you rebuild it, it stays the way it is. And if later on, you get a different type of retail coming in, we want to, we want to encourage people not to move their cars, if possible. Continue their shopping without moving their cars. And connecting the two would be great.
We do have a connection sort of halfway to the, to the handicap parking.
Can we extend it?
We could extend it. We would eliminate one parking space in doing so.
Well, you'd have to move the parking spot.
Yeah, we're kind of, we're, I might be able to find a spot.
Can we take a look at, yeah, take a look at that? See if you could do it. It's just a nice idea for the future, if we change tents.
Yep. I also thought about maybe wrapping around this way.
Yeah.
Which wouldn't interrupt anything, would create like a little pedestrian area on site, because we do have to provide the sidewalk leg out to the main road. So that was the other thing I was discussing.
That's another idea, because coming out to the outside, I think to the right or left is Carvel or somewhere.
To the west.
To the west.
Yeah.
And then you have some stores across the street.
Yeah.
Anything that encourages people not to move their cars and to walk, to walk is great. So anything you can do to increase the amount of sidewalking, I think would be a great idea.
The buffer zones, are the buffer zones in the back?
Yes.
Are they well vegetated?
They're very well vegetated, yeah. Yep. Very dense.
All right, thank you.
Anyone like to speak to the application? Entertain a motion to close with a 10-day written comment period. Motion by Robin, second by Gloria. Have you signed in on the sheet, please?
Yeah.
Print your name, and Jimmy, did you do that?
Thank you.
Oh, all in favor? No, on the slash one. I didn't take it. Five in favor, two absent.
Yep.
Brian, you have the posting?
No.
No? Okay. We won't be able to open the hearing tonight, and we'll have to repost. We noticed.
We noticed.
I'm willing to submit an affidavit. I've seen the posting, the drive-through, everything ought to work, but I'm happy to get a new posting.
Well, can he, is his affidavit acceptable?
It has to be the person who posted and acknowledging that it's been posted 10 days prior to today.
You're better off.
Yeah, okay, no worries. So, my apologies.
Okay.
Thank you.
So number four is off the agenda. It'll be reposted. Motion to close by Robin, second by Gloria, all in favor? Close extensions.
You get doubled up next.